We typically start out the meeting with an opportunity for public comment. I think I know there is none, but so goes that announcement. No public comment tonight. We have on the agenda. Site plan review amendment, Forish Construction for Lea Jeep, which is a 7,064 square foot addition at 263 King Street, North Hampton, map ID 24B-67. Yes, sir.
I should let everybody know that I have done work for Forish, and I don't believe that would affect my decision.
So noted. Would anyone like for Dan to abstain from the meeting?
I used to own a Jeep a few years ago.
And are you working with them now?
No.
Okay. Can I have your name and a signature?
Eric Forish, Forish Construction, representing the Lea Auto Group. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam Planner, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board. As you heard the chairman describe, this is for the property that was formerly the Lea Kia facility. We were before you previously within the last year. You graciously approved some modifications to the existing building. And those approved modifications were to put an identity element on the front of the building, which is this feature here. And since that time, we have de-branded the building, i.e. removing the elements identifying it as a Kia franchise. Ultimately, this will be converted to a Chrysler slash Jeep franchise at this location. And as we have proceeded through that initial process, the Lea Group has recognized that the existing facility is not large enough to accommodate all of the activities of the Chrysler facility that's now located on Damon Road, which will be moved over here. So the reason we're before you this evening is to request approval for expansion of that facility. I'm showing elevations here, which come around. There's two parts to this expansion. Currently, on this side of the building and the right side of the building, as you face it, is the service reception garage bay. And that's currently one door. So we would be extending it to a twin-door facility. So there's two drive-up bays that face King Street. And at the rear of the facility, there would be an addition. This is showing from the side, a rear addition to the service garage area. The reason being, the size of Chrysler slash Dodge trucks are larger than can be accommodated in the existing service bays that were accommodated for the compact Kia-type vehicles. So the street elevation would primarily remain the same as was last reviewed here, with the Chrysler element, and as they say, an extension of the service reception, which would all be material that has currently been reinstalled on the facade of the former Kia building. It's now been transformed into the colors of the Chrysler product. It used to be white, now it's silver. So now we're moving on to the site plan. This footprint is the existing building. This is King Street. There are currently three islands behind the building. This is sheet numbers sense. So this is the existing building. This is the expanded service reception. This is the entrance to the property. And this is the addition on the rear, which is proposed at 60-foot deep by the existing width, which is 100 feet, so 6,000 square foot. To the rear of that addition would be continual landscape island. And I know that Carolyn questioned a couple of existing trees. And we are showing trees located to the corners here, and we certainly are flexible as far as those locations, but we are proposing them here. There is parking spots along the side of the property, which would be eliminated to allow for vehicular traffic to move about in a safe manner. Couple other comments. When I was here previously, we had a discussion about the pruning that was not approved to the trees on the property, and I presented a report from the arborist as far as the health and condition of those trees. And the summary of his report is that during the dormant time of the year, which is current, that the trees should be properly pruned by someone that's in the business. And I have provided Carolyn a copy of a purchase order to that firm to move forward with the appropriate pruning that was outlined. In terms of stormwater and review, there's been a lot of back-and-forth dialogue, emails with engineering regarding the maintenance and so on. And the Lea Group has been maintaining the three properties in terms of periodic cleaning of catch basins and things of that nature, but not at the frequency that it was supposed to occur. Once we were made aware of that, we have, during this past month, on this property, all the catch basins have been cleaned. We even went to the extent of having Fletcher scope the drain lines, and I could provide you with a thumb drive, and you could look at the inside of the pipes if you cared to this evening, but I'm sure that you've got other things you're interested in. And we did provide a report as to the functioning, proper functioning of the onsite system. Again, there was some dialogue from engineering questioning the author of the report. The person that signed it, although not a P.E., his boss, Michael Schaefer, who is a P.E., who did the design for this, he was the one that actually went onsite and did the inspection. So his subordinate drafted the report and submitted it, but we certainly will get that upgraded with Mr. Schaefer's signature and stamp. There's some other things with engineering as far as a recorded stormwater management plan on the deed. We've attempted over three years with engineering to get this resolved, and there was silence for a while. And now that silence, again, there's dialogue back and forth. So I think we're reaching the end of that hurdle, because we have submitted the instrument for recording with the signatures of the Lea Auto Group. And engineering has some more language they want refined, and we'll be glad to do that. And I'm just referring to the report from engineering. Again, quite a bit of what was discussed was just the ongoing maintenance, and that certainly is something we agree to and would make sure will happen. And a representative of one of the owners of the Lea Group is aware of this and so on. So at this point, I think I'll just turn it over to you folks and all the other questions.
Carolyn, if you want to have comments to us about the process.
Then we'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, I mean, just the only issue, I did send the DPW comments, and there's some follow-up. They recommended a couple of conditions, which I think would address. Obviously, they wanted to see the inspections by the P.E. and a report by the P.E. before the hearing closed, but they've got that initial paperwork in, so I think they're comfortable with having you go ahead and close your part of the permit, but make sure that no building permit is issued so that those final items can, we can make sure that they don't linger anymore and get addressed. So, you know, and it's all really related to stormwater and the functioning of the system.
So in one of their comments, they remarked about putting the drain under the building. Do you have any reaction to that?
Well, yeah. This, that work is actually covered under the plumbing code because it's under a building, and therefore the material is cast iron, which those familiar with plumbing, it's extremely rare that cast iron piping would fail because it has to be properly installed, it has to be pressure-tested, and so on. We will consider looking at rerouting the pipe, but I can't stand here and say that that's a good idea from an engineering standpoint. I have to defer to the engineers. Gladly consider that if rerouting around the building is possible, we'll be glad to do that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Devin, that was a recommendation by DPW, right, not a requirement? So it's up to the applicant.
I think it was more, it seemed like they were calling your attention to it, to say it looked unusual to us.
We've done it several times in the past for other projects. Typically, that occurs when the grade is such that to get to point A, from point A to point B, we can't go to another point C because the added length prevents the proper pitch. And I can't tell you yes or no for this case, but that's typically the time that we would put in the cast iron instead of rerouting around, is that we just don't have the pitch to do that. So we'll be gladly investigate it, because if it's possible and makes sense.
Is that a public health issue anyway? I mean, if the pipe breaks under their building, they just have a difficult time repairing it?
Well, there, I mean, there's the cleanup of what gets loose, but...
Stormwater. Yeah, so, right, it's not, I mean, DPW is just, as you can see in the memo, just noted that it's not the best practice to put a building on top of a stormwater pipe. I mean, there are buildings on pipe, on top of pipes all over, but now our codes are different. So in the event that you're, you have a scenario like that, you want to make sure the pipe is a whole lot stronger than what you might typically put in so that it's less likely to have a failure, so that you don't have to go ripping the floor of a building to maintain it. DPW doesn't have jurisdiction over it because it's a private line crossing private property. So it's really, and there are no easements anywhere on this private line. So it's really a matter of, you know, judgment, basically. It's not in the public way, so DPW can't mandate a change.
And as I've said, that from a practical standpoint, it makes sense. So we'll gladly look at that and see if physically it's possible to do it, because it would actually be less expensive using the stormwater pipe materials than plumbing cast iron pipe materials.
Anything else? Yep.
There was one question by staff about the drains and the downspouts, the discrepancy between drawings.
That those drawings were updated and resubmitted to engineering.
I'm looking at a small version of the lighting plan, and I think to the north of you on King Street, which is further out of town, I've got my north right. What is...
I've got a large version, would be...
That's just what, I mean, we typically would guard the lot line light overflow, but I'm wanting you to give me your thoughts on that. Yes, I'm looking at that type.
This is their other property. This is Honda.
I wanted you to say that.
Yes.
Okay. So in that sense, we have a concern that probably goes away because it's all, it's basically a continuous ownership. There's a little bit of light at the front, but that's onto King Street, so I didn't have any problem with that.
I actually think that may be a, I can't verify, a public light that could be brought here.
Could very well be. There's a...
If that's not extent past the curve. After we had original, because this is original work, we're not changing. After we had done that, we actually had an engineer go out with a light meter to verify that it was within the specifications that we said we would be within.
Yep. And I haven't been by there at night. Those are shielded, those aren't going upright.
And there's trees.
Any other questions? Got a lot of paperwork in front of me.
We need to close public comment.
Second by Ann, sorry, John. So we've had the presentation, we've done the questions by the board, we had a public hearing, we've closed public comment. We have an opportunity for more board discussions, if anyone has any other thoughts about the property.
One thing that comes to mind is, in the past, we've set conditions that requirements had to be made before a building permit was issued, and it was up to the discretion of the building department whether they could issue that or not. And they changed it to, well, the condition had to be met before occupancy was granted. And it came a bit of a quagmire with the neighborhood. So I'm just wondering about, in this situation, what kind of reassurance is there that if we have a condition that, I know it's just kind of paperwork, but so was the other, that, you know, this condition has to be met before a building permit is made? What kind of, what could you, could you speak to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that, that did happen in the scenario that, obviously, there was an appeal to you all. It's not typical, I would say, that that happens. I think, and the building commissioner doesn't reinterpret conditions. I think in that one situation, it was about finance. I'm sorry, it was about...
Lot line.
It's a lot line question.
Right. Getting the driveway issue hammered out, I think. And so I wouldn't say that it was his interpretation. I think there was a rationale, given that they needed, the applicant needed more time to work congenially, or hopefully congenially with the applicant. So I think, I feel like that was a, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think that was a unique circumstance, and I wouldn't say that it's the practice of the building commissioner to reinterpret conditions. So I would be confident that pre-building permit conditions would be held. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So revisit for me the DPW concerns. So it, I think we've had very few questions of the applicant, so I'm anticipating that we approve site plan. We certainly vote on that. My question says, when we do that, how are the assurances that the DPW wants in terms of filing the amendments and getting the maintenance plan approved and getting the plan signed by an engineer? Those things can still be tied to the building permit?
Right, so I think, and I, and there's been discourse, as the applicant noted, with DPW, and they're moving in that direction. There's some final things that have to be done, so there's this, the maintenance and operations plan that has to be recorded. And then there's just the finalization of understanding that the stormwater system will function as designed because it's been maintained at X intervals or not, if it's still functioning as designed. So those are the two key pieces in, that should be definitely done before a building permit is issued. I think that DPW is comfortable with that, knowing that they're moving in that direction, and so I think the dialogue will continue. And this is an amendment, obviously, of a, you know, there was a dealership, this is just an add-on, so it's not, you're not approving a brand-new site plan that's a completely different use. So, you know, the use is staying the same, it's really just buildings being added.
So what I'm getting at is, those three conditions that I mentioned need to be on the site plan approval so that they become part of going forward?
Right, so actually, I noted two, so the...
Well, there's the ops maintenance plan, there's the P.E. engineering, but then there's the filing of the amendment? Is that not something...
Well, that's part of the operation and maintenance plan.
Okay.
So it would be one, because they need, it's an amendment of the original stormwater plan anyway, and that's the thing that has to get recorded.
Okay. Having led the horse to water, would anyone like to make that proposal?
Motion to approve amendment to site plan at 263 King Street with condition that the operations and maintenance agreement be filed at the registry of deeds and provision of annual documentation and inspection of the stormwater system for the city and the community.
Signed by...
Signed by a professional engineer.
Thank you.
Higher to issuance of a building permit.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. Appreciate you very much. Everybody hurry on for the debate.
Carolyn, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I have a few things, but I did, I am subtracting one.
Which one?
I hope it's the site plan review.
It's one of the A&amp;Rs. So we can do this in any order. I don't know if you want to talk more about the site plan draft. You got it right before the meeting last time and didn't have time to digest it. We made some changes based on the discussion, so, you know, we're, we can talk about it now, or if, you know, or let me know if you haven't had a chance to look at it and you want to put it off for two weeks. We actually don't have any permits for February 11th, so we can do another, you know, code and planning session. Can we do that?
Yeah.
I think it'd be better if we did, but let me just try this idea. If we discussed it tonight, would we meet then? Just checking.
Well, we could, we, we might, because we were thinking about ways to address the URA map thing, maybe create a strategy for going over that zoning, because we didn't quite finish that. So we might have a short meeting, anyway.
I need, my comments are not on paper.
Okay.
It's my action. I looked through it, and I think I didn't think we'd really get to it tonight.
All right, so then that'll be homework for the 11th.
Okay.
Okay.
You gonna send that out again?
Would you like to?
So this isn't going to change what you just sent out? So we can look at this.
Right.
Is there a date on the bottom, by the way? Did I put a date?
No.
Well, I can date it, just so it's an updated date, and resend it if you want.
But you're not gonna ask my poor little printer to print it out again?
Yeah, just looking for a date.
So that ends...
Just jumping forward.
Is there gonna be a new map for the meeting on the 11th?
Yeah, we wouldn't, right, we were, we're gonna change that based on your comments to about the FFR and the...
Yeah. Okay.
And so then, the other two items are minutes and two A&amp;Rs, so whichever one you would do first.
Any comments to the minutes?
Move approval.
Thank you, John. Second from Tess, all in favor? And the A&amp;R is two?
Yeah, so one is Pulaski Park. So... There's a piece down here, it was part of the original Round Hill, sorry, Round House redevelopment project. So the city owns parcel down here and then Pulaski Park. This A&amp;R is for the purposes of... South Avenue, do I have it the right way? Taking a portion of, basically, it's the hillside here, which is not officially part of Pulaski Park, but it's part of city-owned property, and merging it with the Pulaski Park piece, so that then we can use the funding to do the part two, phase two of the park. So there's no, they're actually, they're sort of carving a, I don't even think this is a new lot boundary, it was just two, there were a couple parcels the city owns here, so it's just shifting it officially from general city purposes to park purposes.
Was phase two of Pulaski Park, was that the, like, the walkway?
Yeah, going down. So it's gonna be on this parcel primarily.
So it's increasing the size of Pulaski Park by how much?
By 14,192 square feet, plus or minus.
So you're just acquiring it so that, is it a CDBG grant?
We're not acquiring it, the city owns it, it's just transferring one...
But you're transferring it for the purposes of the...
Right. And then it'll go under Chapter 91, so it'll be permanently protected as a park, and it can't be used for any other purpose.
But it also allows you to use current funds to do stuff with it.
Right, so the funding that we got, the second park grant is for this, but it has to be on park land before...
Sure, yeah.
Is there any plan to use that portion of the lot for staging and discarding of topsoil and doing, is there anything in the construction of the rest of the park that needs to use that back parcel now?
I have no idea.
I know, I don't either. I'm not sure.
Well, but they're all, they're, I mean, the work is going on now.
Yeah, but that back portion isn't really approved for anything yet. I mean, well, they didn't fund it for anything yet. I mean, if...
No, it is. We got the money for it, for phase two. We got another round of state funds for that. But right now, I think there's a fence in, they could have removed it, because I haven't seen the park once, they, you know, wrapped it. So it may be that right on the top, they have staging stuff, it wouldn't surprise me. And certainly, they'll need places to put some stuff, you know, when they start working here, so...
Well, my feeling is these are all curiosity questions, but of course, we want the whole park unified under one set.
And it's not a creation of a building, a lot, it's just sort of, it's just transferring land.
So you're actually gonna deed it from the city to the city?
Park designation, right? You would resign it?
Yeah, if we have to designate it under Chapter 91 as portion of the park. So it's going to be recorded as part of Pulaski Park. So it's gonna be sort of reallocated.
That protects it in terms of the money being for park purposes?
Right. And then that piece could never, you know, in 15 years, we couldn't change our minds and say, oh, let's do a big hotel project.
But it would require...
Legislative action.
So we have a motion on the floor by Tess. Do I hear a second? John, time. All in favor?
Are they way ahead of schedule on the park because of the weather?
You haven't looked at the webcam recently?
I've looked at, I've peered into the little slip, you can, there's like, there's little ways, like, almost every morning, we got...
The home page of the city, there's a webcam.
The webcam's cool. The webcam is cool. It's cool.
Right, Greg's me, too. Slow down.
As long as you're not doing it in your car.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? You know, I would like to do one quick thing that came to me last round, is if you can go around for your other collateral committees. If you have a thought about what, just let us know, are they meeting? What are you doing? What's up with those committees?
I have a question about mine.
All right.
I don't think I'm on one. I mean, I was, I was supposed to be the TPC, the TPC person, but then I never heard anything, and I never followed up with anybody.
Who's...
So I need to send your name to them so you get the notice.
Okay. No worries.
Maybe as an aside, though, can I try something first? Who's doing transportation and parking? Because Ann took over the bicycle, but who's doing TPC?
That's a look.
It's me. You're going to the, to the afternoon?
Yeah, I thought it was, too.
We thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I knew you were doing bicycle pad, but I just didn't know you'd picked up that one, too. you'd picked up that one too.
So Tess, you mentioned, so nobody's contacted you or not, you mentioned last time we met that he's on EDLU and he's never been to a meeting because...
EDLU's... They recons orientation, it's, it's...
We're not allowed to be on it.
Yeah, it's Lucky Bill.
That's our bill, yeah.
Wow.
Why are we not allowed to be on it? It's a city council committee. It's not a mix-up.
All right, well, which brings me to...
I have another A and R too, to see.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that we did. With the restructuring of the DPW committee?
Public Works.
Public Works, is, are we, is that one we should have picked up? Or is that a city council committee like EDLU?
Public Works, no, that's, that's, that's like the planning board, it's not city council. So there's a separate appointed, mayoral-appointed body.
Good. I'll take that answer. Dan, are you on one?
I'm doing a technical review.
And I'm backing up Dan. Which so far has been a very low-maintenance operation.
You're doing the one that's at like five in the morning, right? Five in the morning.
Seven to eight.
Might as well be five.
Have there been any technical reviews lately?
Just had one. Yeah. And there's another one. I have to send out the notice. There'll be one in February.
Well, for me and some of the rest of us, what is that?
It's the re, it's a reconfiguration of Cumberland Farms.
No, what's technical review? It's an informal review.
I just think we should say.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's a review of project plans by prospective, well, prospective applicants, really, because sometimes these projects never come to fruition.
So it's providing guidance to applicants prior to this step?
That's right. And telling them, right, building, housing, economic development, depending if that's relevant, conservation commission, just to say, "Don't forget to look at this, you have to add X, Y, or Z," or whatever.
Applicants really like it because it really helps them be prepared when they come in front of us.
And it sort of is a roadmap for what they have to go do. Yeah. Carla, what are you on?
I have foggy.
Carolyn, we'll go look. There's a reason I wanted to do this.
You're on the state hospital citizen...
Yes, I am. Not a lot going...
Oh, you have your list? Okay. We know that is so interesting because that, their overall guidance plan comes out when it needs to and goes away when it doesn't. That's my experience.
And we have not needed to.
Right. There you have it. Not even with the huge expansion into the back recently.
We need more subcommittees. We've got two, one that never meets. That's right. It sounds good.
I mean, I'm beginning to question my sanity. I mean, CPC takes as much time as this does. It's, you know, it's a real...
And thank you.
We appreciate your leadership.
So it averages out.
Yeah, maybe. Mark?
I'm on the capital improvement committee and we go from September through November. We meet every week and basically all the board, all the departments of the city come in front of us and it's a long list of, not a wish list, but things that they would like to pursue. And then we prioritize everything, rank everything and submit it to the mayor and he shortlists everything and puts it in the budget, so that's what we're up to.
I would like to say that CPC, I think, gets more than their fair share of things that should be on that list. Alan?
I'm on the housing partnership. And I actually have, it's not clear to me yet, even though I actually have gone to almost all the meetings, what its function is. I think it may be a organization in search of a function.
Stay with it. I mean, yeah. Is it, is it a time, I mean, is it a time commitment on your part?
Two hours, once a month. So it's not a lot, but I think Peg Keller really has to scratch her head very seriously every month to figure out what to do at the meeting.
That's too bad.
Just on the verge of saying at a meeting.
Or maybe they meet less often. Housing came before the community preservation committee because we're just starting a new round and had kind of analyzed where the dollars and cents over the years had gone. And proportionately, housing does not get a fourth, you know, you know, there are categories that you can spend, but it's really almost a structural problem. It's so hard to get housing projects presented and come up for us. So I think we had a nice discussion about it, but it, I didn't feel like the city CPC funds were being slighted to housing. It's just that we pretty much jump on every project that comes before us if it's a housing project.
Respond to applications, I guess.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, it's just you can only do what comes before you as a, as a grantee. Another A and R?
Yes. This one's in, this one's in Florence, Chestnut Street. It's not creating a new lot, it's really just to sell a swath of property from one house lot to the butter to give them more setback. So the, well, what's interesting is there's an existing 50-foot lot, which is what's, 50-foot frontage, which is what we've changed the zoning to allow. They're going to add 10 feet to make it a 60-foot lot, but I think it's because of the setback. They don't need, it just gives the house a little bit more setback. So there's no, you know, both lots will still comply in the end.
And is this on the east side of Chestnut?
Yes. Yep.
How big is the lot that's giving up the property? How big will it be, the frontage?
Well, when it, it's 90 feet, it will remain with 25,000 square feet of lot area still remaining. So it's a substantially sized lot.
Tess moves approve. Mark seconded, all in favor?
Okay.
Move adjourned.
Tess seconded, all in favor? Thank you all.